Good afternoon, welcome to the monthly meeting of the Wycomico County Board of Education. Could we please stand for the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Sean, it's my pleasure to introduce everyone to our student pledger today. Mr. Sean Dooling, who's a 5th grader at North Salisbury Elementary. And we're very pleased to have you here today Sean, you did a great job. And would you introduce your guests, please, to the audience?
My guests are my mom Andrea and Dr. Hall, the principal of North Salisbury.
Something for you Sean, and while I'm coming to do this, I do want to just comment that many of you may recognize Sean's mom, our own Andrea Dooling, actually my right hand. And so, we were so pleased, when you were nominated by your principal, I think it came as a surprise to your mom too. The day that you were nominated, she was so excited, and I can tell she's still a very proud mom. So, congratulations and thank you so much for being with us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you Sean.
Thank you.
So, I do want to say that our president, Mr. Don Fitzgerald, is under the weather today. So, as vice president, I'm Gene Malone, I'll be conducting the meeting, so bear with me, is this the first time I've conducted one of the Board of Education meetings? Mr. Fitzgerald, if you're watching, take notes and you can give me some pointers later. So, I do want to say that, I should have said that before, today's meeting's being livestreamed and videotaped, and the videos are available for viewing at WCBOE.org, so everyone's aware of that. So, 3.2, approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend our agenda to add an additional item, the approval and ratification of changes to the school calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the amendment to the agenda, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, now I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, thank you. 3.3. A moment of silence. Over the last month, the school system has lost some former employees. Mrs. Barbara Purnell, retired principal at Delmar Elementary. Charles Eddie Selby, a retired custodian at North Salisbury, Mardella Middle and High School, and Bennett Middle. And Mary Emily Twilly, retired teacher at Delmar Elementary and Westside Intermediate. If we could all pause for a moment of silence in your own way. Thank you. 3.4. Student representatives to the board, one of the highlights of the monthly meeting. And we'll start with the gentleman seated at the table with us today, Mr. Keith Flag, representing Mardella High School.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, I'm happy to present our Mardella School Agenda. The SGA was proud to plan a spectacular winter formal last Friday, which had a large turnout. Our cafeteria was beautifully decorated and created a nice scene for the dance. Deion Johnson was named our Teacher of the Year, he's an outstanding teacher who understands the importance of building relationships with students and setting high expectations for us. He has positively influenced thousands of students throughout his classroom, his leadership in coaching, wrestling with the yearbook, his leadership with the weightlifting program, and his leadership in the chess club. Everyone who knows Coach Johnson understands why he is so deserving of this honor. Kayla Cook reached her milestone in basketball, in her basketball career that few ever reach. On February 1st, Kayla scored her 1,000th point during the basketball game against Wy High. Her leadership on and off the court is inspirational, we're very proud of her. Our kindness club has started a drive for the Wycomico County Humane Society, they're collecting items for the animals that are in the kennel and they will be delivered at the end of the month. While there, they're also asked to walk with the dogs and learn about the needs of humane societies. Spirit Week kicks off this week and we're excited to see all the participation in the winter-themed ideas. Our Honor Society is currently collecting money for pennies for pasta and also the pennies for patients' drive, which goes towards the same cause of leukemia and lymphoma society. Our Red Cross Club continues to work positively to impact our community, they have recently gone through a CPR training and are now all certified in CPR. On February 3rd, they spent their Saturday preparing meals for the homeless and they continue to be models of selflessness. Our Unified Strength and Conditioning Team took 2nd place in the state championship last week, and their hard work and positive attitude paid off. We're very excited to see that our gym floor will be repainted and refinished this summer, along with our gym floors, our gym walls will also receive new padding and a fresh coat of paint. Our cafeteria will also receive some green paint to liven it all up and an inviting place to eat and to enjoy concerts, plays, and other performances. New TV equipment has been installed throughout the whole school and has made it easier for teachers to stream different content and to enhance education. Mardella will strive for the most participation in our events and leukemia fundraisers, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. We go to James and Bennett High School, represented by Rowan Osman.
Hi, thank you for having me today, it's good to see you, board and everyone. I'll go ahead and start by saying that it's currently Spirit Week at James and Bennett, so this week we actually have a class wars theme, where each class, freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors have a different theme. So, for example, if we're doing Generation Day, which matches with Rock and Roll Revival's theme, My Generation, we have, for example, babies, teenagers, middle-aged, and senior citizens, and the point of doing this sort of class wars is to increase participation from our school. So, I think it's definitely been successful, we're having a lot more spirit throughout our school. In coordination with our Spirit Week, we're also having a pep rally this Thursday, and we're tying our pep rally with the American Heart Association fundraiser. So, through several different efforts between classrooms and overall as a school, we're collecting money, and all money that's raised will go to the American Heart Association. We're also planning to do a Dance for March, we're still working a bit more on the theme and some of the things that go with that, so there'll be more news to come with that. And additionally, next week is going to be Clippers Choose Love Week, where we have lots of different decorations around our school, photo booths and things of that sort to encourage kindness, which goes along with our kindness initiative at Bennett. Our Leo Community Service Club will be participating in several different community service events across Salisbury in the coming months. We will be working with the Tim Canard 10K, as well as the Salisbury Marathon, and we are also sorting eyeglasses to send to countries throughout Central America and South America. Our Mock Trial Team has currently won four of the four competitions that we've competed in, so I'd just like to say thank, congratulations to our team, as well as our track team and basketball team for their successes in the past months. In addition to Christina Sun as a National Merit Scholar, we additionally found out that Jasper Flint, who was a senior at Bennett last year, was additionally a National Merit finalist. So, a lot of academic success is happening at Bennett too. And then finally, I have to end with talking about Rock and Roll Revival, that's by far the greatest thing that's going on at Bennett right now. We're in the midst, we just had three shows this past weekend, where it will be starting up again on Thursday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday are going to be our final four shows. We've been sold out, or nearly sold out, for the past few shows, and we definitely want to continue that trend. So, if you haven't come out, definitely come out and see it, it's a great show, and all money goes to the PTSA, as well as the junior class, so thank you for having me.
Thank you very much.
Rowan, I have attended already, as you know, I'm a big fan of Rock and Roll Revival, and just want to comment that you did a beautiful job on your instrumental pieces, so thank you.
Thank you. Representing Parkside High School, Colleen Simkins.
Well, good afternoon, it's so great to be here. This is probably the highlight of every month, is coming here to talk with you guys and to say the great things that are happening at my school. On February 3rd, we hosted the Skills USA competition, we had a great turnout, a lot of wonderful students placed, and we're really proud of all of them from all over the county, not just Parkside. It was a really great event, and there were a lot of judges that came out to support Parkside, and it just, it turned out really well. On February 6th, our school also attended Unified Strength and Conditioning Competition, they placed 8th, 7th, and 4th with Coach Bruce Harrell and Emily Miller. We are all very, we are very proud of all of our students that participated. Talking about renovations, so I got to see a little sneak peek, through pictures, of course, of what's going on in the lower wing of our building, and we just wanted to say thank you for all the renovations that are being done at our school. We understand that it was originally just supposed to be for HVAC and for lighting, but you know, they've been so gracious to allow us to have a little bit more done that we saw was needed, and we are very thankful for that, and it's going to be beautiful, the upstairs is gorgeous, and I think it makes everyone a bit more excited to come to school every day, knowing that they're going to be in such a beautiful building, so thank you. For our Teacher of the Year, I was a part of it, and it was a really, it was a great time. My friend Daniel Arroyo Flores and I, we walked around the school and we presented the nominees with Golden Apple Awards, thanking them for all that they do, and I wrote each and every teacher an individual card, thanking them for what they did, and kind of some insight of what we're so thankful that they're doing, and it was really great to see their expressions. And we were able to present the official award to Ms. Lisa Nicholson McKinnon, I did not have her personally as a teacher, but I do see her, she promotes the kindness club, she's the founder of it, and she's working hard and pushing for kindness throughout our school, and she is absolutely wonderful, and she accepted the award graciously, and she really deserved it, and we are really proud to have teachers at Parkside like her. Speaking of our teachers, there was a need that was seen in one of our students who is unnamed, but the teachers and staff really reached out to her in a beautiful way, and it was really encouraging to see how much our teachers and our staff care about our students in and out of school. For the climate, some initiatives that we are taking, we are really promoting a green school, having less paper being used in classrooms, really using the technology that we have been blessed with. And you can see how the students are excelling, just because we are part of the technical age, and it's a lot easier for us to work on computers and with pen and paper, so it's been really great. Each semester, we start off with a new literary focus, and starting off since we're getting close to testing season, focusing on developing writing prompts and requiring textual evidence in their prompts and in their answers, kind of getting them focused and geared towards park testing and for SAT skills, so it's really great that we're preparing our students for that ahead of time. We are having our RAM relay on March 2nd, which is going to be fantastic, it's always a great activity, a great turnout of our students, and it really gets us to have bonding time and some social time with each other outside of school, so we're really looking forward to it. We have St. Parkside Day coming up, most people celebrate St. Patrick's Day, but we celebrate St. Parkside's Day. It's going to be on March 16th, and it's all week, so that includes a Spirit Week and a pep rally that we are very excited to have, and some little initiatives and some little fun things going on throughout the school day, and we're really excited to have it coming up. We also have the mayor that's visiting our school to speak to our government classes, and we're very thankful for him, and we are really looking forward to his presence. And in conclusion, I really wanted to thank, on behalf of Parkside, Dr. Hanlon for the school days that we are making up, I'm sure you're probably getting a little heat for it, but we are very appreciative for it, and we do understand the purpose behind it, and we are thankful for it. So, thank you so much for all that you do and for going and trying to get those days wavered, we do appreciate it, and we look forward to coming to school and getting our time in, so thank you.
Thank you. And representing Wycomico High School, Nicholas Nguyen.
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Nicholas Nguyen, and I am honored to represent Wycomico High School today. So, first, I would like to recognize Ms. Christman for being Wycomico High School 2017-2018 Teacher of the Year. She dedicates her time by being the 12th grade SGA advisor, Wy High Social Media Coordinator, the Foreign Language Department Chair, and many other positions throughout the school. Nevertheless, she is an amazing Spanish teacher, no bias here. Students, teachers, and administration are rooting for Ms. Christman in the next round. On the topic of victories, our boys varsity basketball team advanced to 20-0 after defeating Stephen Decatur last Thursday. They were able to secure the title of Bayside Southern Champions as well. Last night, Wy High's varsity math team won first place at the Parkside Meet, and lastly, our Unified Strength and Conditioning Team received 3rd place at the Maryland State Championship. On the topic of basketball, Coach Waller, who coaches boys varsity basketball, reached his 800th win, which puts him as the coach with the highest number of wins in the state of Maryland. We really appreciate his dedication towards a wonderful basketball team. Yesterday, UMES college admissions officers came to Wycomico High School to conduct onsite admissions. We are extremely proud of the students, which was 19 students, that were admitted to UMES through onsite admissions, but also, we are proud of people like Parkside who also have their UMES onsite admissions there as well. This initiative to give students an opportunity to attend a four-year university is amazing, and we thank everyone who had a role. It is currently Black History Month, and we want to celebrate our rich history in many ways. For example, we have trivia games during lunch where people who answer correctly receive prizes, like a Cunibon or a food prize. In addition, Ms. Shock, who is a history teacher at Wycomico High School, will host a Black History Emporium, my bad, to showcase the rich history of the African-American community. All of these events show off what it means to be a community and how to be proud of a person's identity. The Alumni Basketball Tournament was a success with a great turnout. All of the money raised will be used for events that the guidance department plans for our school community. For example, Success for the Best is a community engagement event where everyone is invited to in a festival with games, food, and postgraduate educational opportunities. A couple of weeks ago, auditions were held for a county-wide musical, this year it will be Seussical, a musical about the stories of Dr. Seuss. Many Wy High students landed roles in this year's production. It is also directed by Mr. Johnson, a science teacher at Wy High. Many of the staff and students are very excited to see the results of hard work in the ensuing months. So, we are currently in the midst of Wycomico High School Spirit Week. Yesterday's theme was Battle of the Grades, where grades would battle to see who had the most school spirit by wearing their class color. We will also have themes from Tie Day Tuesday, which was today, to Fantastic Friday, where students will adorn clothing from their favorite artist, band, team, etc. We will also have a pep rally this Thursday to celebrate the winter sports season and to kick off spring sports as well. The SGA wanted to have a fun event to reinvigorate everyone's school spirit. That is pretty much everything that's happening at Wy High, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. Thanks to all the student representatives. Colleen said it was the highlight of her month to come here, it's a highlight of ours, I think I can speak for my colleagues to hear from the student leaders in the schools. You all are what, you make it happen in the schools for us, thank you very much. So, we'll move on to 3.5, public comments. Individuals who wish to address the board have signed up, and I have those folks' names in front of me. Just want to read a statement about public comments, if I could. The public comment section of the agenda is an opportunity for the superintendent and board to listen to individuals' comments on topics concerning Wycomico County public schools. The board president has the right to limit public comments in length for those concerning personnel or student matters which clearly identify an individual or individuals' appeals or legal matters that are before the board, negotiations and topics that are more appropriately addressed in closed session or privately with a staff member. What I would ask as a courtesy is, you could limit your comments to 3 to 5 minutes, just so we can stay on the agenda, and what you had to say is very important to us, but we just need to limit it to 3 to 5, if you could, please. So, in no particular order, I would ask, the first person for public comment would be Michelle Bradley. We have a podium over there with a microphone.
Hi, good afternoon, my name is Michelle Bradley, and I am a parent, but also, in full disclosure, I've also filed to run for a fully-elected school board for District 1, so I wanted to-
I don't think you can comment, make those comments in the-
Can I not? I just wanted to address that, because what I'm here to talk about is the Bennett redistrict, or it's not redistricting, but you're calling it the Enrollment Balancing Initiative, and after meeting with the community at an organizational meeting that April Jackson had put together, there were some concerns that came forth, and I know the superintendent was there, and we had discussed matters of transition for the students that would be given the opportunity to be grandfathered in, and I don't know if that's going to be discussed further, but I don't, I wanted to make sure that it was reiterated, that there was a concern of that transition socially and how it would impact them academically, as well as the transportation issue, because the neighborhood that the children are being taken from, although it's closer in proximity to Salisbury Middle, it's also an area that where some of the parents are single-parent family households, they may not have transportation, or extended family is the primary caregiver, so transportation may not even be there. So, I wanted to make sure that that was addressed, and if there was going to be any consideration to having them qualified as fit families during that transition, so they may be able to take advantage of the transportation that the Board of Ed offers. So, those are just two main points that I wanted to make sure were addressed, when you talked about that initiative later on in the agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. Next for a public comment would be April Jackson.
Hi, how are you today? I am a community leader, and I'm also city council member, and I'm very much concerned about the community, because it is the community that I live in. And I've talked to Dr. Hanlon, and I've talked to some others here, and I'm looking at, okay, we discussed the ratio of Salisbury Middle, which was 67.6 minority, Wy Middle, which is 69 to 70% minority, Bennett Middle, 56% minority, if we move 90 kids from that area, minority kids from that area, the percentage will go down. Myself and Maria Shante also discussed that we've had concerns about being segregated again. My concern is that we look at this picture, make sure that this does not happen. The segregation part does not come back into existence where this happens, where our kids are being segregated again. Dr. Hanlon and I, Paul Butler and some others, have really discussed this, and I'm pretty well fine with this, but there are some things that we need to be concerned about and we need to watch. Dr. Hanlon has also spoke to me about some programs that she wants to bring into existence that would kind of like balance out that issue, and along with Michelle. I would also like to speak on the transportation for some of the children who want to be grandfathered in, who may not be able to because of transportation. So, we do want to make sure that these children are young people who are being grandfathered or want to be grandfathered in, do have transportation to get to and from school, and that's as much as I have to say about that, but I do want you all to watch with the segregation part of that, and make sure that that does not happen, thank you.
Thank you. Next for public comment, Percy Fields.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I've never done this before, so if I seem a little nervous, I am. Ultimately, I'm here because of the boundary line changes and the proposal to change approximately 150 of our community kids from where they are either currently attending or would be attending to either Salisbury Middle or Wycomico Middle. But for me, right now, there is even a bigger issue, because I had a chance at the last meeting that we had to say that I had spoken to a young lady who was very articulate about her concerns when it comes to her child's education, and I said that, you know what, you need to come to these meetings because your voice needs to be heard. Her response to me was, why? Because they're going to do what they want to do anyway. And see, there is a serious disconnect between the education system and our community. Now, part of it, I will admit, is our parents' fault, because really, they should come out more and support their children more and be a part of their education more. But even with the first meeting that we had on this, I did not receive a letter, and most of us did not receive a letter, until approximately a couple of days before the meeting was even held. By that time, everything pretty much was already planned, it was already done, and really, it was just a meeting, in my opinion, to tell us, this is what we're going to do, and you have to live with it and deal with it. And what I'm hoping is that somehow or another, we can change that with the new superintendent and Mr. Butler being here as part of our community outreach, that we can change that perception of them versus us, do you understand what I'm saying? Of the board is going to do what they want to do in spite of our community, because to you guys, it's about numbers. It's about how many kids can we transport safely or get to one location to another safely, but for us, these are our kids, these are our children, these are our future leaders, and like my daughter, my daughter is a student at Bennett Middle right now. She's involved in chorus, move, JEMs program, and other activities, that my concern is, if she goes to Salisbury Middle, now she has more that she has to compete against, which is going to make it harder for her to continue in those types of programs. So, basically, and plus what Michelle was talking about, for permission for the transportation, that is a serious issue that I hope the board does consider. If you have enough students, we have enough parents who generally wants to stay at Bennett Middle for their 8th grade year, why not consider making some kind of a special transportation for them for at least one year, for at least one year? That way, I think the board, Superintendent Hanlon, can see this come to fruition, and our community will feel better that at least you guys said, okay, we're willing to meet you halfway to help your kids out, because there is a need that needs to be met. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. So, is there anyone else here that didn't sign up that would like to give some public input at this time? Okay, well, we thank you for your input, it is Wycomico County Public Schools, so we do want the public's input, and thank you for that. So, we'll move on to 3.6, superintendent's report, Dr. Hanlon.
Okay, I have a number of things as part of my report to the board and to the community today. I'm going to begin with a special recognition, February is Career and Technology Education Month, and we want to take a few minutes today to recognize our excellent Career Technology Education Program here in Wycomico, and with us today, we have Mr. Brian Ashby, who's the supervisor of Career Technology Education, and Mrs. Ruth Malone, who's the Director of Curriculum and Professional Development, who are going to highlight a few accolades, a few of the many accomplishments of staff and students in our Career Technology Education Program, so I will turn it over to them.
Thank you, Dr. Hanlon, members of the board, Mr. Malone, thank you so much for giving us this time to highlight during CTE Month, the programs that we have at our Career Technology Education Center, and without further ado, I will pivot to Mr. Brian Ashby, who is our strongest voice and our strongest advocate for the programs offered throughout the county and primarily at Parkside High School, so I'll pivot to Mr. Ashby.
I too want to thank you for your time. As was mentioned, February is CTE Month, we're extremely proud of the programming we have, not only at Parkside, but also at the comprehensive high schools that have CTE programs. So, we're going to begin with a short video that kind of gives an overlay of why students chose CTE, and then we're going to go to a very short PowerPoint that gives quite a bit of information on our current status with CTE, and then we'll ask any question, answer any questions.
I plan on going to Salisbury University for nursing, and after getting my nursing degree, I want to either further my education and get my master's. degree, I want to either further my education and get my master's in nursing, or become an obstetrician back at college.
First year after I graduate, I'm really looking into apprenticeships, on hands jobs right now. Not so interested in going to a direct college, maybe a trade school. My future career aspiration is to become a physician's assistant. That is my goal.
I want to go to Hampton University. I've been excited. Definitely knowing that it's going to be like what I've learned in CTE. So going out into the field has been interesting in CTE, and just to think that I'll be able to do that every day when I go out after graduation, after college, and do those things every day is really exciting.
I think that I'll probably be inside of a body shop full-time. It's what most Level Two students do. He actually places you in one, and then you can decide to stay there or not.
Since I've been taking this class for two years, I realized that before I was in between computer and mechanical engineering, but now that I'm getting closer and closer to college, I've decided I want to go into mechanical engineering.
I want to be an ER nurse, so being a CNA after I graduate will allow me to save up money for me to go to college and get that degree.
The newest programs for, for next year, for 2017-18, there is an upgrade to our firefighter EMT program. It'll go to firefighter EMR. Also, business management finance, and our accounting track, our marketing track, and our business administrative services. Each one of those programs is upgraded. Each one of those programs is four courses, but it will prepare students for post-secondary study or a smoother transition into a career in business management or finance. There's also an upgrade to our automotive program. And then we're also looking in the future at upgrading our horticulture program to a certified professional horticulturist, as well as interactive medium production. That's one of the programs we're really looking at to bring an additional program, and that would complete our, a representation of all 10 career clusters from the state of Maryland. So that would be our 10th, and that would be our final addition. Okay, so Colleen mentioned St. Parkside Day. One of those students was dressed for St. Parkside Day. So when you saw a little something, I asked her, I said, is it okay if I show that? And she said, sure. So I did have her permission. On the graphic representation, on the upper left, Program Success by the Numbers. Currently, we have nine of the 10 Maryland CTE career clusters represented. And to break the numbers down, we have about 400 students in applied technology exploration. And then within what we call Level One or Two, those students who have selected a career pathway, currently there's 427 students. One of the things I'm extremely proud of is our expansion of Project Lead the Way Pre-Engineering. We have 71 students enrolled. Our fastest growing program in the last three years has been computer science, which three years ago had 81 students. Now we have 254. That continues to grow. We did do an upgrade to business management and finance, which included accounting, marketing, and business administrative services. That's grown to 519. I was at Bennett this morning, I spoke with the TAM students and got to see them demonstrate their ability to teach a lesson, 54 students. And then since 2012, we have grown annually 6.2%. So we continue to find avenues to get students enrolled in CTE, and much of that has been in the comprehensive school, not at the Parkside CTE Center. Commendations from our February 2017 Monitoring Team Report. We have Maryland Higher Education Commission, MSDE, as well as other stakeholders come in every five years and really look at our programs under a microscope. We do a self-study. Three of the things that were takeaways from that were our programming decisions are based on data and local trends. We really work hard with the community and seek community input when we change programs. Wy Comico was one of the only systems in the state to meet its non-traditional student enrollment, and that means genders of students who are going into occupations that are not typically that gender. And for the last three years, we've met our target. I was told we were the only one, but one of my colleagues around the state said, no, we did it too. So I said, we're one of the only one. But Governor Hogan did ask Wy Comico to go to the Governor's Workforce Investment Board, and I presented there last May. And then the third commendation were CTE maintains excellent relationships with county officials, our local chamber, Warwick, Salisbury, other post-secondary institutions, as well as our PAC. Our PACs are like none other in the state. Those of you who have been to dinner with us or enjoyed PAC meetings, we have approximately 400 stakeholders, and we get over 50% attendance two times a year when we have our PAC meetings. And that is pivotal for us to continue to make positive change and to change our programs. There's other measures, and this is just a snapshot, but it's called PQI, or Program Quality Index. I am anxiously awaiting our PQI data. I'll receive that in March. That measures our success versus other programs in the state, and we need to show a positive trend upward. So when we look at that, the percentage of our CTE students who have successfully completed a technical skill or passed an industry assessment, we outpace the state average by just over three, well, about 4%. And we hope that that continues. We work very, very hard to prepare our students for the technical assessment, so they can gain a credential prior to graduation that really gives them a leg up as they transition into a career or to go to post-secondary study. That's a value-added opportunity where they don't have to repeat much of the work they've done with us. The second piece is, once we have students in our Level One programs, once they're in a pathway, their graduation statistics from, this is two years ago, I haven't gotten last year's data, we had a success rate of 98.86% with our graduation rate. We're extremely proud of that. Typically, it's one to two students a year who may not graduate for one reason or another. Several years, we've had 100%. So we hope that that continues up as well. We're at a point where it's, it really comes down to an individual student that makes the difference with our data. And then third, the percentage of CTE completers, and that is students who have completed at least four classes. Two quarters after graduation, 80.52% of our students are actively employed, attending college, or in the military. That may seem a bit low. Maryland's data system does not talk to all the other states. It's called the Interstate Data System. So we know that's a bit low, but until all the data systems talk, it's tough for us to get an accurate measure. The one thing I will note is, we're above the state average there, so we are pleased with that statistic. To look at the right-hand part of the screen, benefits of choosing a CTE program, and I'll go through these quickly. With all of our programs, we have opportunities for college credit. We have multiple articulation agreements with Warwick. We meet with them every December. And we're at a point now where we have colleges and universities coming to us to establish articulation agreements. And as those, as I receive those, I, I send them to the board, we review those, we generally sign off, and that provides opportunities for students where they don't have to repeat, or at times they get automatic scholarships, which that makes parents very, very happy. Scholarship funds, we're sending out letters right now for all eligible students to compete for CTE scholarships. We have 58 juniors as of last year, who are seniors this year, who completed CTE a year early, and we've changed our program a bit to allow them the opportunity to dual enroll in their senior year, and many students have taken us up on the opportunity to begin CTE formally in Grade 10. So we have 58 students who are currently not with us, but they still have the opportunity to compete. Our real-world application, if it weren't for our PACs, we would not have the number of internships and work-based learning that occurs in the community. Anytime a student wants a, to pursue an occupation in their junior or senior year, we can find a suitable match for them and get them gainfully employed. I think future direction, we save parents a lot of money. We can, we can tell before they graduate, is this a potential career for them? Give them some confidence before they leave. And one of the things I love to hear is, when I went to college, it was easy. We want to be extremely rigorous while they're here, whether it be at Parkside or one of our comprehensive schools. As far as networking, we really push our CT SOs, our Career Technology Student Organizations. We've recently added FBLA at Parkside as a new chapter, and our Skills USA organization. We had our annual open house on February 3rd, and that's a good opportunity. Competition is good. I stress competition. And when we can do that in an educational environment, it prepares our students for real life after they leave us. A few highlights, and I couldn't put them all, but Josh McKelvey was a junior last year, he's a senior this year. He was awarded gold at our National Skills USA competition. He will be back this year, hopefully, going to states, and hopefully going back to nationals. He is an excellent student. Leila Renshaw was a 2017 graduate. She was just recently named a nominee for the Presidential Scholar, and she's one of only four students, four of the 90 nominees, who had an emphasis in career and technology education. Gabrielle Morse, she was a 2016 graduate. She was one of our first students we sent to the World Food Prize, and she's a Wallace Carver Fellow, working in Utah at a lab for USDA. Mr. Joe Showaker was named in 2017, the Maryland State Department of Education Secondary Change Agent. I will be putting multiple teachers up for that, or Teacher of the Year this year, but he kind of set the bar pretty high. And then also, I wanted to note, Mr. Dave White, our automotive instructor, was a national finalist for the Harbor Freight National Tools for Schools Award. And the funds that he received from that award have been reinvested into our programs for the good of students. So we applaud those folks for their awards and their good work for CTE. Looking to the future, and this is all pending budget approval. Next year, we look to expand Project Lead the Way to include James M. Bennett High School. Currently, that's at Parkside and at Wy Comico. For 2019, we're also looking at an interactive media production program at Wy Comico High. That will complete our 10th career cluster. So right now, we're nine of 10. That would be 10 of 10. And I've been around the state and looked at interactive media. That's something that we can certainly use in this area, and I think would excite kids. And then in 2020, once Parkside renovation is in its final phase, we will add an additional program at Parkside. And I put two there. It could be this two, it could be something different. The community will let us know. One is Project Lead the Way Biomedical. An additional, because of our demand in criminal justice, could be Homeland Security. So we'll cross that bridge as we get closer. But I, I publicly want to say I appreciate the support of this board and the community for Career and Tech. It is a privilege to serve in my role, so thank you.
Are there any questions? Mr. Palmer?
Mr. Ashby, I was going to save this till later for another part of the meeting, but beings that you mentioned, stressed competition, that you stress competition. It's not by accident that a lot of organizations will hold events over at Parkside, and it's more than likely because of the excellent skills of the culinary department. And because of their excellent skills, and your mention of competition, do you have any plans for any Iron Chef events over there?
We actually have an event coming up on February 22nd. We will host our, our regional culinary competition. So other counties from the shore will come in and compete with us. Not quite like Iron Chef. We do do some of that. The kids really like that type of competition to hone their skills, but it'll be our regional skills competition. So that will be on the 22nd. I think we have seven chefs come in. They'll have about a three-hour period, and we will have judges from the community judging their work, so.
And should you have anything in-between time amongst yourselves, please feel free to ask any of us to judge.
Absolutely.
It's a food competition, right?
We love having you at our PAC meetings, and I will note-
It's great over there.
We've, we did the state of the schools, and on March 29th, we'll do an additional event with the chamber that will highlight CTE at the Ward Foundation, and our culinary students will be providing the food for that.
Mr. Ashby, what's considered two quarters after graduation?
Two quarters after graduation, we're looking basically at Christmas time of the following year, after they graduate. It's what Maryland and through our Perkins legislation, it's when they take a peek, and we're looking at student data to see, have they been positively placed? Are they employed? Are they in the military? Or are they in, are they in college studies? So we give them a chance to transition.
And I also like to commend your culinary kids, because they provide lunch for the retired education personnel, and it's fantastic. If you put it on a silverware, it would be like going to a fancy restaurant.
Thank you.
Can you explain the interactive media production to me?
Interactive media, the program that we've proposed is a combination of graphic arts, web design, film and video, and that will come with the industry-recognized credential of one or multiple Adobe certifications. That has high student interest right now. It's not meant to compete with what I would call our VPA program. It's meant to expand a student's opportunity to get in arts in a digital format. So we are working very, very hard to put that program in place for next year.
That'll be the expansion at Wy High that you spoke about previously.
Correct.
Any other questions?
So we, we again, thank you very much for the opportunity to highlight one of our programs. We take seriously our obligation to ensure that our students are indeed career and/or college-ready, and this is certainly a very essential component of that obligation. So thank you so much for the opportunity to present some data from our CTE.
We thank both of you, thank you.
I just want to thank you both again for your leadership in this area. When I travel across the state, our CTE program is, is well-respected, and you all are, provide amazing leadership in this area. And Mrs. Malone, your infographic, a little hard to see on the screen, but I think it's, it's really condenses a lot of really important information that I hope will get out into the community in the form of this infographic.
Absolutely. Well, we'll be talking to Mr. Butler about other ways that we can also use it.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
A few more items, and actually, I'm going to move to, to Mr. Butler for our monthly extra mile award presentation.
Okay. This is one of my favorite parts of the program. We get to recognize two outstanding Wy Comico County Public School employees who have done an amazing job for the past 30 days. They've gone the extra mile in helping do something well here at Wy Comico County Public Schools. So... Our first award goes to Karen Culver at Pemberton Elementary School. Karen, if you'll come forward. Oh, I'm sorry, Mardella. Karen is in charge of the food service program. She's a food service manager at Mardella. She's been there for the past 13 years. She's been in our school system for 23 years, and just recently helped us pass a couple of certifications at Mardella Middle and High School. Eric Gosley, if you'll come on down too, because we want to get your picture as well. Karen, here is your plaque for being our extra mile award winner, and you also receive a certificate. And we'll have you stand over here with Dr. Hanlon. We'll take your picture.
And we'll have you stand over here with Dr. Hanlon. We'll take your picture.
Thank you very much.
Smile with Karen. And now from Pemberton Elementary School, we have Kayla Riggs. Kayla, if you'll come forward. And Kayla's just an amazing guidance counselor. When they talk about Kayla, they say about how high-energy she is. She really connects with her parents. She helps all the students. She even does some coaching after school as well. So she really has gone the extra mile in these past 30 days in helping at Pemberton Elementary School. And I want to give you your plaque, right there, and also your certificate. You are welcome. And if you'll step over here, we'll have your picture. Did your principal come? All right, come on. Ms. Eiler. Again, the extra mile award is something that we want to recognize our employees because we have over 3,000 employees and so many of them do great jobs every single day. But there are just a few individuals who comes forward every single month and they just put in the extra time, the extra work. And like we say, they go the extra mile in helping make Wycomico County Public Schools what it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Butler, very much. I also, while we're talking about great employees, I also want to let the community know. I told the board earlier today that we were surprised this morning by WBOC that our own Jay Disharun, who works in our Facilities Department, is being recognized or nominated by WBOC for the prestigious Jefferson Award in our community. So that's wonderful that he is receiving that recognition. He does so much for the school system, but also for the community as a whole. So I'm sure we'll be seeing more about that in the media. So congratulations to Mr. Disharun. And then last but not least, Mrs. Jones, we have our grants report for the month.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We have revised the grant report just a little bit to provide you a little bit of additional information regarding the programs that we're receiving funding for, as well as applying for. The first grant that was funded this month was through the Maryland Art Education Association for a new teacher mini-grant for classroom supplies. The grant was a discretionary grant given to Jennifer Pataniak. She's an adaptive art teacher for our county. And it will support Pinehurst, Wycomico, Middle and Wycomico High for $500. Would you like for me to go through the abstract as well? The grant will provide additional materials for adaptive art classes serving many students with intensive disabilities. While traditional art supplies were provided, students will strongly benefit from additional opportunities to work with 3D materials and to create things that are lasting. By providing students with quality instruction and the chance to investigate, and the chance to investigate of new materials, different avenues for self-expression are presented. The goal is to work to increase student self-worth as artists and as people who can learn new things. As the teacher and students become more comfortable with the different mediums, students can continue to explore and grow. Overall, funds will help the teacher to accomplish this goal of making the adaptive art program truly meet the needs of these fantastic students with intensive disabilities. It will allow them to grow as artists and to see their worth with their abilities. The next grant, I'm sorry.
Courtney, stop for just a moment. Do we need to go through the abstracts for all of those? It's totally up to you all, but I just didn't want you to feel like you had to keep.
Thank you.
No problem at all.
Thank you.
No problem at all. The second grant that was funded was for the American Farmers and also one from the Walmart Foundation. There were three grants submitted in January. One for the American Farmers for the Grow Communities Grant, which was submitted the same month. And we received $2,500 for the Parkside CTE Horticultural Program. The Walmart Foundation provided funding for promoting success through reading at Fruitland Primary. And also, there was a grant submitted to the Community Foundation for the Eastern Shore. It was one of their FY18 mini-grants for a Bit of Grace Horsemanship Promoting Success Through Reading. It is also a discretionary grant for Joseph Rafa at Prince Street Elementary for the amount of $1,500. Year-to-date, we have requested $2,914.680 and 61 cents. And we have received $2,752,614.61. And I stand for any questions.
Any questions? That's tremendous. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the adjustments that you made, providing additional information.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hanlon. So 4.1, approval of previous open session minutes. At the minutes, I trust that you read them all. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? All right, 5.1 through 5.4 are consent items. And those items were in advance distributed to board members for reading and decision-making. Is there any questions on any of the consent items? If not, we'll move to 5.5, approval of the consent items.
Move to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor of approving the consent items signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Okay. 6.1, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, is there a motion to approve the middle school enrollment balancing initiative as presented in the attached documentation? Do I hear a motion? Is there a second? Discussion?
I would like to take a few minutes to go through the issue at hand and the process that's been followed to come to today's board meeting, to recommending to you all a vote to adjust the boundary lines. And so I prepared some information just to assist you visually. Thank you. Okay, thank you. So we start with the issue. And I think everyone is well-aware of the issue, but just by chance, someone in the community who is unaware of what the issue at hand is, I will go through that. And this graph really says it all. This graph shows Bennett Middle's current and projected enrollments. We currently have what we call an enrollment bubble in the 5th grade. We have no control over where growth occurs in our community. And that growth has occurred in the Fruitland area. And so the students who are coming out of that enrollment bubble in the 5th grade are moving into Bennett Middle School's district. And so in looking at what we have determined as our enrollment projections, if we don't do something, we're going to have some major issues. As I've said before, those who work and go to school at Bennett Middle School, parents have expressed concerns already about crowded hallways, high teacher-student ratios. Currently, right now, our teacher-to-student average ratio is about 26 in a classroom. And again, that's an average. And that is only expected to grow. So we know we needed to address the problem. My preference in addressing, it's what I was hoping would address the problem, is part of my vision overall. And that is that we implement signature programs or academies across our school system and our secondary schools that will allow, eventually, allow students to go to school where they choose to go based upon their interest. For example, next year, we are introducing, you heard Mr. Ashby and Mrs. Malone talk about the popularity of Project Lead the Way at the high school level, to the point where we are expanding that program to Bennett High School. Project Lead the Way has a middle school program that is more of an exploratory program that looks at not only engineering, which is what we offer at the high school level, but also computer science and biomedical science. So looking, considering the fact that at the middle school level, there are, those are the exploratory years. So my preference would have been that by offering such signature programs across the county, which I believe is what we need to be doing instructionally, that it would solve the enrollment balancing problem. But it doesn't. It's not soon enough to address this issue. So we knew that we needed to... So I guess you have them all rather than one at a time. Anyway, we needed to address the issue. So we considered many options in looking at changing boundaries in order to move the smallest number of students from Bennett Middle to Salisbury Middle and to Wycomico Middle, based upon the space that's available in those schools. The current student-to-teacher ratio at Salisbury Middle and Wycomico Middle is closer to, it's in the teens. So there is, there's space at those two schools. And so we talked about, or staff considered, and then came to me with their proposal, many options of what was the optimal area, what made the most sense geographically? And what was in the best interest of students? And so, again, the third item up there is that we recognize that the signature programs that we're going to begin to implement next year would not completely solve this issue. And so we determined that we needed to make some minor boundary adjustments. So we did, as so many, or the individuals who spoke today, spoke about the demographic shift. We considered this from the very beginning. We examined it because we recognize that that's critically important. And there will be demographic shifts, as have been noted, anywhere from 2% to 5% as we move these groups of students. In examining that, we looked at what are our options? And determined that this was still, these two geographical areas that I will show you in a moment, were still the most logical, impacted the fewest number of students. And considering the fact that we're going to be implementing these signature programs, those demographics in schools are going to change over the course of the next few years anyway. So we met with community leaders. We met with community leaders early on and just yesterday, as Mrs. Jackson mentioned. We met, Mr. Butler and I met with Mrs. Ashante and with Mrs. Jackson. We spent a lot of time taking a look at those numbers, talking about what the options were, talking about, listening to their concerns. And I believe that we left that meeting with the understanding that as easy as it is for me to say, "Please trust me," that's easy for me to say. And I know, hopefully, the longer that I'm here, actions will speak louder than words. And I also said to them, "Please hold my feet to the fire." And they assured me that they would. Because I have no intention of resegregating our schools. I want what's in the best interest of our students. And I want our enrollments to be balanced, both class-size-wise and demographically. That is my intention. So I appreciate, and to another, to Mr. Fields' comment, I do want to say that we do listen. And I know that the perception is not always that we do, that we've already made our minds up. But we do listen. And I hope, again, that as I'm the superintendent for longer periods of time, that you will come to understand that you can come and speak to me. And I will listen. I won't always do exactly what your suggestion is, but I will listen and try to meet you halfway, or at least explain to you why it's not possible to do what is being suggested. So we held two parent input sessions and another parent meeting that Mrs. Jackson called and invited me to attend. And we also, the next, last item on here is that at the parent input sessions, one of the questions that was raised was the concern, "My students are doing well at Bennett Middle. I don't want to move them because I hear that the academic achievement in the other two schools is not comparable." We've looked at that. And I assured them the best I could in those meetings that I believe that we have quality teachers in all of our schools. Our curriculum is the same across all of our schools. And that we want the best for our students, no matter where they go to school. But I did go back and I looked at our PARK scores, which are the assessments that are used to hold us accountable. And they are comparable. Students who score 3, 4, or 5 in all of our middle schools, that is comparable across all three schools that are being considered. So basically, the same. And then finally, we did review feedback. We listened. And one of the things that I believe, one, maybe Mrs. Bradley, I can't remember who mentioned it, but one of the comments that was made was about considering the transitions that are important in middle school. And you're absolutely correct. So I have adjusted my recommendation to the board to include the grandfathering of students who are not only going into the 8th grade next year, but who are also going into the 7th grade. And so students who have started at Bennett Middle, if they choose to request permission to continue to go to Bennett Middle, they will be able to make that request. We are continuing to explore this idea of transportation because I'm also hearing what you're saying. I am not including that in my recommendation at this point because as you said, Mr. Fields, we need to look at the number of people who are requesting special permission. So we will be keeping a very close eye on that, looking at those numbers and considering that as we move forward. We want, we want those who want to be able to attend there to not have barriers to being able to do that. So we will continue to explore that.
Is there any effect on students when they move into high school?
Thank you. There is no impact on the students' high school. The students' high school remains the same where they were currently districted to attend high school. That remains the same, as does their elementary school. So this is, this is the map that many of you who are familiar with this issue have seen. We, just to go through why we ended up with these two areas, you can see, at the very top of the map, the red schoolhouse is Salisbury Middle. The blue schoolhouse is Wycomico Middle. If you go all the way down to the bottom of the map, you see Bennett Middle in the green. So it's clear that both of these areas are much closer to Salisbury Middle, or much closer, yes, to Salisbury Middle and Wycomico Middle respectively than they are to Bennett Middle. So the bus rides will be shorter and more convenient for families that choose to stay there for the next two years. We also talk about areas being defined by natural boundary lines. And what we mean by that is those areas that are clearly defined with the Wycomico River, for example, or major roadways. And as I believe you're aware, we're looking at approximately 90 students who are impacted on the move to Salisbury Middle School and about 60 who are impacted in the move to Wycomico Middle School. So, maybe hard to read the outcomes on the right, but I think, again, the graphs, these are, this is the outcome. This is the graph of Salisbury Middle. You can see at the very top, the red line indicates the state-rated capacity of Salisbury Middle School. The blue line at the very bottom is current. That's if we do nothing. When we make this adjustment to Salisbury Middle School of approximately 90 students, you see the gray line gets us closer to the capacity of that school. And we will be balancing the ratio of students. And again, I mentioned already that we would be grandfathering seventh and eighth grade students. This is what happens at Wycomico Middle School, or what we anticipate. When you get further out in the years, it's much more difficult to count on those projected numbers, but it's what we're anticipating. And again, you see the state-rated capacity in the red, you see what is currently happening if we do nothing in the blue, and what will happen with the gray. Now, please also keep in mind that while all of this is occurring, while I'm talking, I'll move to show you what happens at Bennett Middle. All of these projected enrollments are going to change when we implement the signature programs, beginning next year. So, this is what the ultimate outcome at Bennett Middle, which is what we really needed to happen. We needed to come down under that red line, that state-rated capacity, so that we keep Bennett Middle School from becoming overcrowded with high-class sizes and so forth. The blue line is, again, what would happen if we did nothing. The gray line is what happens based upon my recommendation to the board. And I think I've remembered to include everything in my comments. So, I'm seeking your approval to make these boundary line adjustments. And I'll entertain any questions that you have.
Any questions, board members?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
If you're not going to include the transportation piece in the proposal that you get ready to approve, then many parents are going to already say it's no use of us, because the information they're going to receive is, right now, is, we must provide our own transportation. So, they're not even going to bother about signing up for the grandfathering, because their answer is, they don't have the transportation. Which is why it is so important that the transportation piece be included in the proposal and this vote, because that way the parents will know ahead of time that if you choose to, to, to be grandfathered in, your child will have transportation. As it stands right now, they're not even going to ask for approval. They're not going to ask me grandfathering, because they're going to receive the information that they're not going to have transportation. So, this is a very vital part of this vote and this proposal. And for you to just disregard that, in my mind, means that you're just disregarding the needs of our community. Which is why, to me, you talking about next year is going to change anyway, this should just wait to next year and change everything at one time. Because that's ridiculous to me. It's not fair to the kids in my community. It's not fair to the parents in our community. You know what I'm saying? Because, because they do not know, when they get that letter, the mail saying, your child is going to, but you had the option to, but you must, and I know it's going to say it, but you must supply your own transportation, then they're going to say, it's no use of us even signing up our kids to go. So, that means we're going to have at least forty or fifty kids that would like to stay at Bennett Middle, that's automatically going to have to go somewhere else. And you guys keep talking about numbers and numbers and numbers, but these are our kids.
I understand that.
No, you don't. Because these are our kids. And you're still saying the same thing, but yet next year, it's going to be totally different. So, why not wait till next year? Why not, why not get with the community that's being affected, get involved with members of the community that's being affected, and let us all come together and find a reasonable solution to this issue? That makes more sense to me.
I told you to agree with him on that hand, because you are leaving parents in a dilemma. Because as he said, you have a certain numbers, I was saying that there is not going to be transportation provided for these young people, who are now going to be, if they wanted to stay at Bennett, they're going to have to go to Salisbury Middle because they're limited transportation. And I know it's not your fault that they don't have transportation, but you have to consider the community that they're living in.
Okay, thank you.
You have to consider that.
We thank you both. Thank you for your input. Are there any other comments or questions from the board?
No.
I would just like to say that, you know, going to the public meetings and also listening to the superintendent and other comments from staff, and just relaying my own personal experiences with my own children, one of which went to six different schools in the school system here, and the other seven different school systems. Be honest with you, they had a great experience in all of those schools. I know that's not your experience, but, you know, based on that, I know how I feel about it. They had many opportunities to go to different schools. And in one case, they had to change schools their senior year. So, and it was a challenge, but they got through it. And if you would ask them today, it has no effect on them whatsoever. They don't remember that as a negative. They still are friends with people that went to both of those schools as adults now. So, I just wanted to share that we, we do listen, and I understand that people are upset. I would like to encourage the superintendent and our transportation folks to find a solution as quickly as possible, make a decision so that can be shared. I know you intended to do that.
I have indicated that that, that I am going to do that.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, I assume you're ready to vote on the recommendation to approve the middle school enrollment balancing as presented by the superintendent. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's carried.
Thank you very much.
Six point two, for information purposes, the board members that will be presenting diplomas for the 2018 commencement exercises as follows. Is it up there? For evening school on May thirty-first, which be Mr. Fitzgerald and Mr. Palmer. James &amp; Bennett is Friday, June first, Mr. Fitzgerald and Mr. Turner. Saturday, June second, Mardella High at ten a.m., Mr. Brown, Mr. Malone. Saturday, June second, at two-thirty, Parkside, Mr. Brown, Mr. Murray. And then in the evening, Saturday, the second, at seven p.m., Wycomico High, Mr. Malone and Mr. Murray. It's just for information purposes. Six point three, personnel matters classified. It's only for information. And then we move to board members' reports. So, we'll start at the...
Can I ask a question first?
Certainly.
I just wanted to make sure it was clear that the item, we changed the agenda, and the item about the calendar was included.
Under the consent items. It was. Five point four.
I just wanted to make sure that I understood that correctly.
Yep.
And just, again, for board members' knowledge, I think you're aware of this, and for the community, that we have, in multiple ways, communicated with families about the change in the calendar. As you know, we did request that two of the five days that we missed because of the snow, we requested that those days be waived from the calendar. And the state board felt very strongly that we should take, make every available day, use every available day to ensure that our students' instructional program continued. So, basically, that made us go to school on President's Day, and we had no other choice. There's, there's really, with the governor's executive order that we start after Labor Day, we also have to finish by June fifteenth. So, the community has typically been used to days being added at the end, and that's no longer possible. So, we had to take what I consider really the last two available days. I do believe that if we have more snow, that the state board would be willing to look at a waiver at that point, but we needed to use those two days. So, appreciate the positive comments that the student rep made about that decision, and hopefully, the community understands as well.
Perfect. Thank you. So, I'll start to my left, your right, for board member reports. Mr. Brown?
Yes, I'd like to just mention that I have talked with a number of individuals in the community and in the neighborhood. And one of the things that they seem to be most appreciative of, realizing that our society is going through difficult times, but they do appreciate what the school system is doing to notify them that the schools are either on a lockdown or safe in place when there are things that are occurring in and around the neighborhood of the school. So, that's a big plus factor, because many times, the kids are calling home and aren't quite telling the same story because they want to get out of school. But the parents have already gotten information, and they know that the school has things under control. So, that's, that's a big plus factor for the school system. So, the system of, that we've had, is actually working. The other thing is that I've visited three of the schools on the west side, and I'm most pleased with the atmosphere of the schools, the environment. It's evident that learning is going on, both instructional and social. The kids seem to be really happy to be in school. It's evident that they're pleased with the teachers, the teachers are pleased with the kids. And I'm, I'm sure that it's probably going on in all the schools, but they just happen to be the ones that I've been going to because of some projects I'm working with, with the Rotary Clubs. Another thing is, the third thing, along with the mentioning of the safe-in-place in schools, is that they realize that, many of them know that I've worked in the school system, and when I tell them we have to do a hundred and eighty days, they understand. They don't like it, but they understand why we have to do what we do.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
Sure. I had the, it was fun listening to the CTE presentation, Ms. Malone. Thank you. I see Mr. Ashby is already gone, but I did attend the skills competition, and it was really a fun morning, and found out some interesting information. I already knew that our horticulture program was the number one in the state, I think size-wise is the way it was rated. I'm not sure a hundred percent of that, but we're also the number one local retailer of honey, of all farmers in the area, which I didn't know, but they only, not only sell their own honey, but they sell, other farmers bring their honey to them to process and to sell on a retail basis, and they were selling it that day. So, I encourage anybody that wants to to go by there and pick up some plants or, or locally grown honey.
Okay. Mr. Palmer?
When you, when you read out who's going to which high school for graduation, you notice my name's for the evening high school, and I don't know how many people get the opportunity to go to the evening high school graduation. There's never very many number of kids, seven, eight, maybe ten. But it's well-attended, parents and grandparents, they're glad their child finally made it. And a lot of these, these students that go through there, they've had some very difficult challenges, but they made it. And it's very touching when you go to one of these high school evening graduations. You ever get a chance and you see it scheduled, stop on by, and you'll see some real joy in this small graduation.
Mr. Murray?
Thank you. I, I actually, I'm going to have to ditto on some of the comments that have already been shared, but it's always a big pleasure of mine to hear these student reports from all of the high schools. And I also know it's happening in the middle schools and elementary too, as well. But I noted today that when reports were coming through from all the schools, from Mardella, Parkside, Wy-High, and Bennett, the activities which our students are turning back into our own community, the health concerns, the animals, and things of that nature, I think is excellent that's going through. I also wanted to mention, I was over at the skills competition at the CTE program, which is a little special, dear to my heart as well. And I always enjoy watching the students. I'm a retired educator myself, so I enjoy that. And prior to this, was substituting there at the CTE and always getting to watch those kids achieve and learn. Thank you.
Thank you. So, for my board member report, thank you for bearing with me for the first time I ran the Board of Education meeting. So, Mr. Fitzgerald, if you're watching, I'm a little behind schedule, you're better at that. But I did my best. Secondly, I appreciate the public input. As I said before, it is a Wycomico County public school system. So, not only do we want your input, we need it. So, I hope those that are watching this on TV, or they live stream it later, or they watch it on, on the website, we appreciate the input and we want it. We have to have that in order to make the schools better. And that takes me to where, you know, Mr. Ford and I attended the WR McCain Economic, I call it a symposium, last week. Lots of business leaders, lots of private enterprise, lots of citizens there. And one thing that comes out loud and clear is that when people want to move to this area, they're looking for jobs and they're looking for the schools. I mean, they're looking for education for their children. So, that's one of the things that drives the growth of this area. And I, I say that very seriously, and I know that's a fact, and I appreciate Dr. Hanlon and her leadership team, and all the members of the school system, teachers, guidance, counselors, assistants, what they do to make our schools better, because they are getting better. We do a lot of great things. CTE is amazing. Academic achievements, the All-State Bands, the Rock and Roll Revival, the athletic accomplishments, all those things drive what this area does in attracting new talent to the area. Mr. Butler is, I call him our marketing guy, that's probably not his title, but he's the guy out there making sure that the papers get the positive stuff that we do, because that's what's important too, to let the community know we do some great things. And our school system is great, and that's what's going to make our area grow and be better and the schools be better. So, thank you, everyone, for what you do. Thanks for everyone who attended, and I think we stand adjourned.